Good afternoon, it's 7:00 PM on Monday the 2nd of May. This is the regular meeting of the Richfield Board of Education. In attendance this evening are board members Christine Malik, John Ashby, Jim Paulus, Crystal Baraki, and Peter Tensing. We are joined by student representatives Jordi Chazares Terrada and David McIlroy, and superintendent Steven Nelski. I would like to call upon attention to the top of the agenda where we will focus our attention on the Richfield Public Schools' mission, that Richfield Public Schools inspires and empowers each individual who... I always like to just reflect on that mission statement at the beginning of meetings to focus our attention on what we are all about. I would ask any board member if they have a chance to approve, to review the agenda, and I would look for a motion for approval.
Approve the agenda?
Second. So we have one by Baraki and a second by Paulus. If they ever please say aye.
Aye.
If they vote aye, the agenda is approved. So, this evening, we are hosted by Centennial Elementary School, and we are joined by a delegation from Centennial. Mrs. Wise, if you could introduce your staff.
I will. Would you guys like to come on?
So, it's Principal Wise steps to the microphone just to introduce how proud we are of this particular program, and we're happy to highlight it specifically from Centennial. And what they're going to talk to you today is about the ANSYS program, which is really about providing some tiered intervention services, or specific reading and math interventions to our students who need it most.
Thanks for having us. As you probably know, we're very excited about our program, and this is our instructional support team, and I'm going to let them introduce each one of themselves by themselves and tell what their role is at Centennial.
Hello, I'm Monica Byron, and I'm the Instructional Coach at Centennial this year.
I'm Demi Peterson, and I'm Math Intervention and Testing.
Hi, I'm Deb Williams, and I'm Literacy Interventionist.
I'm Erin Bogner, and I'm also a Literacy Interventionist.
Hi, I'm Kate Chambers, I'm Math Interventionist.
They have a short presentation, basically explaining the program, how interventions are working at Centennial, and give you a brief summary of ANSYS, so I will let them get started with their part.
So, we began this year by defining our infrastructure at Centennial for our ANSYS intervention model, with the resources, the knowledge, and the skills needed to implement all of our supports and services for our students. We created action steps to guide us in this work, and they were to define our operational processes for math and literacy intervention, clarify our team roles, determine our school-wide processes and progress monitoring tools, establish interventionists and instructional services, gather and respond to staff input, develop a math and literacy intervention library, gather and analyze assessment data, and once we've established this infrastructure, we set our goals for the year.
I'd like to share with you those goals that we presented to our staff. First of all, we made it a goal to provide instruction and assessment in classrooms for all eligible students. We collaborated with classroom teachers. We wanted to provide professional development for building staff, and identify a process for math and literacy intervention. In addition, we created videos, shared information and resources at staff meetings, participated in the PLCs, and attended workshops to better our skills and our knowledge.
So, under the tithing of Accelerate Richfield, with one of our major goals being to increase student achievement in reading and math, with ANSYS being the funding source that the resources that we're providing to the building, we, the intent of utilizing the ANSYS funds in our portion of the Accelerate Richfield plan was to provide evidence-based intervention, to ensure that significant instructional intervention is provided to students in addition to their core curriculum. So, in addition to their core curriculum instruction, our identified students are receiving 30 minutes of intervention daily in either math and/or reading. The interventions are scheduled and happen during classroom guided practice in literacy or math, and the students have continuous progress monitoring tied to specific instruction that has happened throughout the year, and the progress monitoring is done by both classroom teachers and interventionists. And the students' overall growth is assessed utilizing our fall, winter, and spring NWA assessments. All right, good. So, I'm going to talk about the identification process, and the identification process that we use is as follows. Using the fall 2015 NWA assessment scores in reading and math, the lowest 15% of students in grades 1 through 5 not identified as receiving special ed were qualified for intervention services. In addition to the NWA assessment, we met and we continue to meet with classroom teachers to discuss placement of students in the program. Our goal was to create a system of support for students needing intervention and have an identification process that aligns with the grant, but also, and mainly, to meet the needs of the students at Centennial.
In order to meet the needs of our students at Centennial, we created an intervention library, and this consists of a defined collection of evidence-based literacy and math materials utilized for Tier 1 and Tier Response to Intervention instruction and guided practice, which are correlated to the curricular standards. We also have diagnostic assessments that are utilized to determine which specific intervention materials most closely correlate to each student's identified needs. In addition, data is gathered and analyzed through frequent progress monitoring, which is accomplished with defined assessments.
So, Centennial's instructional team made the first steps in implementing a functional intervention program during this school year. The results of our mid-year data, which was the comparative data between the fall and the winter NWA assessments, is as follows. In grades 1 and 2 in literacy, 82% of our students made growth; in grades 3 through 5 in literacy, 80% of our students made growth; and in math, in grades 1 and 2, 96% of our students made growth; and in grades 3 through 5, 81% of our students made growth. Students will be taking the NWA assessments again very soon, and we look forward to analyzing the student data at that time. We will continue to work on our intervention library and provide professional development for staff, and also to refine the interventions provided to our students. That concludes our presentation. Thank you so much for your time.
So, questions for Centennial staff and board members? Yes, Mr. Paulus?
On the, when you say that it's very impressive that percent of students who are showing growth, you know, at these intervals, so what is the growth that they're showing? I mean, we expect all students, for example, you know, fall of grade three to show here, and are they closing a gap, or are they growing, you know, beyond what we expect?
You need to keep in mind that the question, it's a 20-question survey in the wintertime. We'll know our actual growth this spring, but these are the kids that are basically what we, they're in the red area, they're significantly behind, and these are ladies that work in groups of 2 to 3 and sometimes 4 kids. So, both growths, we would consider was significant because they have huge gains. They need possibly 20, 25 points, so when we were getting 10 and 12-point growths, we thought that was very good. There wasn't a set measure, because the survey is 20 questions where the full battery does take longer, but seeing that so many of them started to grow, and it is a small group, sometimes very incremental work, very focused on, for example, phonics, or phonemic segmentation, or even counting. These are low, 15% of our kids. So, we were happy that we have started to see them grow and maybe understand reading, understand there are sounds and letters that make up words, things like that, so...
Other questions? Who do you term that 15% low?
We did based on the NWA in the fall, but that's part of the grant, the ANSYS grant determines that. And one of the things we worked hard on, even if a student was just identified as special ed for speech, they could not be part of this program. There's very specific guidelines in the grant, and so that was a struggle for us, and then it was also, we may have added a few kids here and there based on the skill level that was being taught, so if somebody's working on ending sounds, and there might be 3 or 4 kids that are scheduled to work with one of these ladies, there may be 2 other kids in the classroom that need that same skill, so we would include that for that portion or that piece. We try to be as inclusive as possible, but the grant does have specific guidelines.
I know it's the first year, but what is the, what is the plan kind of moving forward? Do you retest and reassess, and if someone moves out of that bottom 15%, then they no longer get the intervention, or how does it work?
They need to get back to grade level.
Okay.
And so, some of our kids, we had a few that moved out in the winter, but they need to show that they're significantly at grade level now. And as we move into next year, and we, these ladies have worked so hard putting together an intervention library, so we make sure we have research-based paths for teachers and interventions to take when we know a student's lacking in a skill, that I truly believe it'll blossom next year, as the library in the last about month and a half, 2 months, and they've been sharing their work with the other schools that are involved with ANSYS, because that was one of our issues. We wanted to make sure that they were incremental, standardized, research-based interventions, not just, "we're going to work with this child on letters for the next 6 weeks," and then document their results. And they do a very good job of documenting the kids' results, so as we move into next year, and we start placing kids in classrooms, we'll have the results from the intervention, and hopefully, work to group some of these kids with like skills or like needs together, so it makes it a little bit easier to reach them all.
And just to hear a little bit of initial background of the board on ANSYS. If you recall, we worked to receive this grant, it's actually part of a $900,000 program of interventions across the district, which received an additional special funding from the state of Minnesota to a little bit over $600,000. And so, while this program is specifically designed for general education students in the bottom 15%, we also have special ed services in ELL students who are identified in those areas. We also utilize Title I funds for reading and math intervention for all of our students. We have compensatory education funds, which also provide math and reading intervention for our students. So, a student is in the 18th percentile of their class, they're actually also receiving intervention from perhaps even similar teachers in reading and math, and might even be some of the time of the people you see in front of you is actually not ANSYS time, but they're actually utilizing that for Title I-based interventions. And we're just making sure to keep those separate, because this is that specific 15% for 15% of the bottom.
Kind of connects to my question, which I'll ask in a second, but first, I hope you do come back and share how this continues to go through the end of this school year and into next school year, because this seems really promising, and I'm really excited to hear what you all are doing. And the question is, even though this is a very distinct and obviously very, you know, specific and structured program, are there ways to share lessons that you all are learning with your colleagues at Centennial or with others in the district? And if so, what do you think are the best ways for us to do that?
I'm going to let Monica speak a little bit on that, because she does work with the instructional coaches in the district.
So, with the instructional coaches, I've been sharing the materials, we've been looking at resources, and we've been talking across buildings. But even more significant this year, the interventionists themselves got to get to, they were able to get together. They had meetings where they could discuss overall our program, what things we need to do similar, what results kind of initially we're seeing in the buildings, but then also be able to break apart into math interventionists and literacy to have those discussions, and that's, I think, been very beneficial. We've had a lot of good discussion when everybody's come back from those meetings, and I think going forward, that would be a very helpful tool, also just to keep that communication going and to share lessons, and, but that was great. I think there was a lot of positive feedback from those meetings, and then within the coaches we've been sharing also.
It's a two-year competitive grant from the state of Minnesota, so we'll also receive funds in '16, '17, prior to filling out a future grant for the '17, '18, and '18, '19 school years. We actually believe as a system, the most compelling argument to continuing and expanding our program will be the student results we anticipate seeing as we really gain momentum this year and work together, and as those growths continue to accelerate as we move into the future.
One thing I'd like to add, you mentioned about the other staff members. We actually did a survey of our staff members when they started doing the intervention library, asking them what was the need, was it phonics, fluency, comprehension, and they became a part of what's now kind of rolling. It started out really small. The key is those research-based intervention tools and guidelines, and also the diagnosing of the kids and what they need. So, the staff now is on board, the library's open to anybody to use, it's in our copy room if you ever want to stop by and look at it, but these ladies have really done a nice job of not only force at Centennial, but communicating with the other schools in the district, and using different tools that they have or we have, and sharing them.
How many schools in the state are part of this?
There's 140, I believe it's 146 districts, and slightly over 400 schools are receiving ANSYS funds this year.
And as you can see, this is quite a group to work with. Many of you probably know some of these teachers, and they're all certified, so they're doing their lesson plans, they're part of PLCs, they're helping others grow and develop, and they're also been attending the MDE. This will be their third meeting tomorrow in the morning, where they're learning more about interventions and working along with some of the MDE requirements for Centennial.
What makes our program somewhat unique in comparison is we actually took this to scale, and it's at all of our schools. So, we have ANSYS intervention in every single one of our schools, and so we're seeing reading and math intervention for all 6 of our, of our students.
This is really exciting to me, because we had a, I know we had this in the middle school, and we had a parent come and talk about what a great experience her son had, and I think the only thing that she struggled with was the fact that it didn't happen sooner, so that we're starting this in, at the very beginning is really great.
Some of our fall, or winter data showed some of our kids are making 20-point gains, and to give you an idea, an average gain for a 4th grader might be around 8, and I believe we had some 20, 21, 25, 26. And sometimes it's just giving them time in a small group, and then it clicks, and then things start happening. Like I said, we were able to exit some in the winter, so we're hoping that when we get to the NWA, which will be in 2 weeks, we'll be finishing that up, we'll see some more great results.
Well, thank you all very much for taking the time and hearing the nation to your students, and we look forward to hearing more from you in the future.
We'll be back.
All right, Steven Nelski, would you move on to the superintendent update?
All right, so we have a set of information. Let me actually begin by reminding us that it is Staff Recognition Week, and so we're all thankful for the efforts of our over 600 staff members in Richfield Public Schools who do an incredible job serving our students and their families on a daily basis. There are actually events going on in all of our schools throughout the week honoring our staff and the efforts that they play. And then also a reminder of the recognition dinner, that is Thursday evening, and it's one of our annual events, where we really take time to take a step back and make sure we are saying thank you to those who give that time and dedication to Richfield Public Moving forward, an update, we've had Director Jason Sellers here a month or 2 ago, talking about ARCEP and Normandale for Richfield-Normandale Prep, an innovative program where our staff, our administrator, our counselors would be located actually physically onsite at Normandale. We actually received official feedback from the state of Minnesota that that program has been approved, and so, we move forward with the application, and that program will be launching in September, where our students will be able to make up credits for high school, be part of our ARCEP program, but also dual enroll and give both secondary college credits all at the same time. So, we're very excited about that. An additional add, it seems like we're being barraged with wonderful information from the state of Minnesota. You know, I'm very proud of the district team and the director team who works to consistently find more funding for our district, because as we think about ways to save money, there's actually a couple ways. One is being physically responsible and spending very conservatively, but the other is to go out and find ways to get additional money. There are what's called Pathway Scholarships, or Really Childhood, which is basically opportunities for students in 4-year-olds and 3-year-olds to go to pre-K programs. There was a Pathway 1, which we were actually not a part of, but we stepped forward and quite aggressively pursued Pathway 2 scholarships. We actually found out this week that we'll be receiving approximately $238,000 for our 4-year-olds to go to 4-year-old programming within Richfield. So, as we think about early intervention for our students, this is going to provide some of the opportunities that we talked about as a board. Our priority is to serve all of our 4-year-olds as much as possible, so we're working together to determine how to best use those dollars to ensure that Richfield students are getting intervention as early as 4, 4, and engaged in a high-quality pre-K program. The sample board calendar, if you recall at our last board meeting, Director Malik, or Vice Chair Malik, brought out the idea of having a board business calendar, and then eventually publishing that. So, you will see in your board packet, sample board calendar, and so we did a little bit of work with the information that was shared by Ms. Malik. So, we're putting into the board a first draft of that calendar, and this is one revised by MSBA in August of 2014. So, we just want to make sure that we're coming back, and over the next month, we're going to try to refine our calendar and create an actual Richfield Public Schools board calendar, so that we are able to publish the business that'll go on in these meetings, basically helping to make sure that our public is consistently communicated with in regard to what things will be on the agenda, and that we're sure that we can actually post this outside of the actual agenda documents, so people can anticipate throughout the year what things will be on our business agenda. So, over the next 4 weeks or so, we'll be taking feedback, looking and refining this, and then adding that to some of our business-based agenda. And then finally, Mr. Holce is going to share with you some information about U.S. Energy Services, because as we do talk about that fiscal management and being conservative with our money, the business office has found some ways to partner in a consortium to really bring down some of our energy costs, and Mr. Holce is going to tell us about that right now.
Thank you. And this is the highlight, as Superintendent Nelski said, looking at how do we allocate resources, how are we most effective and most efficient with our finances here in the district? This is something that Member Malik and the Fiscal Plan Advisory Committee had a chance to review at the last Fiscal Plan Advisory Committee meeting, as an opportunity for us to look at acquiring resources, acquire natural gas specifically in the lowest cost method possible, as well as to do some long-term planning and developing a long-term plan that really helps us predict what our long-term costs are going to be around natural gases over a couple of years period of time. So, I just wanted to highlight this information here tonight, as a program that we're exploring. We have not finalized anything in this area, but wanted to share it with you for comments and feedback as well. Really, this is something, I'm kind of consolidating a part of the presentation that was made by U.S. Energy and Fiscal Plan Advisory Committee, but they are experts in analyzing and managing energy, specifically the program that we're looking at has to do with a natural gas energy program. They provide multiple services in that area, from premiums and logistics, risk management, data reporting, information processing, as well as other energy management systems. When we look at their client base, their largest portion of their clients are renewable fuels, and servicing those organizations in that industry. Their second-largest client base really is schools and commercial offices, so properties that are similar to Richfield School District. Also, the University of Minnesota system is another customer of theirs, a client of theirs as well, as you can see a number of other areas that are really diversified, so it's not just certain schools, but schools are a large portion of their business. This is just a map that highlights some of the programs you can really see as kind of the northern and western suburbs, as well as a number of all-state districts, and then you see the little clients here that are part of the university system, so it's working in those areas as well. One of the things that's unique as far as looking at the western suburbs and kind of that area is our relationship with CenterPoint Energy allows us to do some transporting programs and turn on and off our energy utility program a little bit more flexibly than what some other parts of the state allow for school districts. So, really, they have a number of different programs as far as their support for schools, looking at rates and recommendations around that, utility invoicing reviews, making sure that we're being invoiced appropriately, that our utilization is accurate, that they're charging the rates that should be charged, specifically with CenterPoint Energy. They also have a transport program that allows us to determine whether or not we use CenterPoint Energy as a utility provider, or if we transport in and they pay to have natural gas basically transported into the system, that allows us to purchase it off of that system as well. So, we're not just reliant on CenterPoint Energy as the utility, but if we can get a rate that is cheaper through a transport program by buying it out of state, we can bring that in and then acquire it at that rate instead of the utility rate. It also looks at purpose versus interruptible supply analysis. So, we have the advantage of having discounted rates because we have backup fuel programs or energy programs other than just natural gas supply, so we can have our natural gas supply shut off, move to fuel oil, fuel oil on some of our boilers. They take a look at what is that rate, are we getting the best rate possible in that interruptible service? And then the other thing we're taking a look at is we have dual boiler systems for that interruptible service. Do we start to look at a dual system that's both reliant on natural gas? So, we can either operate it off of a utility program, or we can transport it in and have a similar transition as far as how we program and how we operate those boilers, without interrupting our... Also, looking at gas supply options, analysis, and recommendations at transport program, and then also risk management or financial hedging. So, basically, buying a future rate so that we can predict what our costs are going to be a year or 2, a year or 2 years out from current date. And we look at that as an investment sometimes, as an other investment other times, and manage it that way. Again, they also look at a variety of administrative support, consolidating our bills, allowing us to charge to the different accounts that are in the system and help make that easier for the finance department, doing budget forecasting, analyzing what those future prices are, what we might dare spend versus just kind of taking our current rate and hoping that we don't... Or overbudgeting in that area, so that we really are able to mitigate all future costs. They have a website that helps us, helps support that work as well. One of the biggest reasons for looking at this is that transport program, and that's that opportunity to look at our utility costs, look at costs as far as transporting it in, and realize the better of those 2 prices. It's based on a monthly review of the CenterPoint Energy gas costs. If U.S. Energy can produce a lower cost and we can transport, or we can buy it from them and transport that in, they pass those savings on to the districts or their clients in the form of a rebate. We get increased supply dependability for interruptible clients. They can increase the supply dependability, and we know that we're going to get that natural gas, so that we can continue to run off the same natural gas boilers and not have to switch. And then, one of the things that utilities often do is they have a franchise fee or a charge that's associated with that, and then also different costs associated with being a utility company, and so we mitigate those in months that we're transporting in, because we're not paying for all the infrastructure that's in place those months. What U.S. Energy did is they took a look at, a look back at the previous 17 months of our expenditures, and the number of our buildings and the number of our programs, and estimated what our savings would be. And so, this is the, this is what they believe the savings would have been based on the cost that was the utility cost during that period of time, as well as what their transport costs would have been. Just to highlight here as far as the... $46,000 savings over that 17-month, we're paying just under $12,000 for that 17-month period of time to be a part of this coordination, have the administrative support, have them, give us the opportunity with the transport program. Our net savings over that 34-month period of time would have been about $35,000. So, you can see that there's significant savings to the district just by persisting in that program. This is a detailed analysis, I can't, I know that you can't see the details around it, but this is what they take a look at. They take a look at what's the utility rate, what are the transport rates? These are the months, December, these are the months that we would have used the transport rate versus the utility rate, and what the discount was, so generally, it's the winter months, November through April, sometimes October comes in there as a rebate, and then the avoidance rate, the utilities right now have an excess of an interim rate that is proposed as they're going through the approval process for their rates, and so there's an interim avoidance, interim rate avoidance that's a part of that, and then our net savings. So, this is strictly looking at the senior high school as one of our buildings, it's obviously the largest of the buildings and the largest consumer of natural gas, but that's how that is calculated as far as what those savings would be. Again, we look at that interruptible piece, this is just highlighting the fact that we pay utility for CenterPoint Energy, if they interrupt us, then we have to go on to fuel oil. This provides that uninterruptible delivery of CenterPoint Energy, because we are buying into that system already. Risk management is the second piece, and this is kind of whatever you call the financial hedging associated with the natural gas purchases. We would work with U.S. Energy to develop a strategy, and it really is in partnership with other school districts. So, Yzeta Hopkins, St. Louis Park, or a number of the other districts that are part of this program. of this program, so we would be working with them on whether or not we're buying at future rates. We have individual right of kind of in and out of that program at any time or for any month, but working with other school districts to make a recommendation or a district decision individually on that part. It really, this highlights why we would hedge. There are a number of different times that you can see those rates really spike up, and that's what we want to always defend against. It doesn't happen all the time, and it's not for a long, sustainable time, but certainly popping up to $12 versus having a standard rate above, I think it's $5 here on this scale, is the 10-year winter strip average, or the five-year winter strip average is 373. You can see how we spend a lot of time that's above that line, some time that is below the line. The goal here is to be buying for those peaks lower, but this is not a money-saving plan. This is really about mitigating your risk, being more predictable. So a lot of school districts won't put the whole piece in there, but will purchase 40% to 50% of their natural gas a year out or two years out at the futures rate so that they know and can predict what that rate is versus having that risk that we don't know and then getting into a situation of January, February of fiscal year and knowing that we've already expended our natural gas budget at that point, for allocation at that point. So it's not a savings piece, it's a planning and strategy piece. This just kind of highlights that piece of trying to find the average over the period of time and balancing out those differences. Obviously, there are a lot of factors that impact pricing from the supply, from the demand, weather is impacted, how much is being generated by the different providers, and looking at that. And again, this just highlights the fact of natural gas is an ultimate market, and so we want to be predictable in what that is. When we get into the revised budget, that will just be an opportunity for us to take a look at and discuss why we might do this, especially as we move into preliminary budgets and adopted budgets coming up in the next couple of months. And then finally, they just have some good communication that makes sure that we stay focused and are making good decisions in our budgeting, our resources appropriately. And this is that budgeting report that they would show us as far as looking at what's the future rates for any period of time so that we can build a budget based on the futures, obviously putting some room in there for if it does change, but then also trying to buy at a predictable rate so that we don't have as much of a risk variation. And that's just a quick highlight of that program as something that we're exploring. Wanted to share that with you and seek any feedback. One of the things, though, through the Kristin Malick here as well, for any comments from the Fiscal Plan Advisory Committee, but they thought that this sounded like a smart program. Had a lot of questions about different ways that we might coordinate with efforts. Do we look at partnerships with area school districts? Obviously, that's one of the things that they're trying to do in building up their school district market with having school districts who are already part of the program that really work as a coordinated effort, but individually as well.
So my perspective from the meeting was they were, it would be very conservative on the hedging, which you already talked about, but also they were looking for perhaps a little deeper look back than 17 months since we, I think he did talk about that was a particularly good year, so that looked really awesome, but everyone, I think, at that meeting agreed we'd like to see a more in-depth look at that.
As far as the rates, this is more in line with what we would realize for savings. And you can see the rebate program here for 14, 15 is similar to what they were seeing for 15, 16 as far as the straight monthly rebates. The biggest savings right now is that interim rate avoidance, knowing that U.S. Energy has kind of proposed higher rates, we're waiting to get that final approval. So this is where all the savings, or a significant portion of the savings is coming this year, but you can see it's about half of that really is what the savings would be predicted if we just look at this two-year period of time at rates that are low. But that's one of the things that we're taking a look at before we finally move forward.
What is our current, you know, so whatever the market rate is, is what we're paying now, what is our current annual spend on natural gas?
Current year is, let's see, last year for 14, 15 ran just over $400,000. Current year, because it's been such a positive year for weather and stuff like that, we're running about $300,000 year-to-date at the end of April, if that was. So it's a significant portion of our budget.
Do we have similar expenditures in, say, like diesel for the fleet of ORs?
I think this is one of our larger areas. Electricity, obviously, is the other largest consumer area. We have talked with them about, do they have a gasoline or a diesel oil program? They have a subsidiary or a partner that has that program. It's not part of the U.S. Energy relationship here. We haven't gotten into too much detail about exploring this at that point. One of the things that we are discovering, and I don't believe our current gasoline vendor is a part of this, we haven't made a transition yet at this point, but the state has a contracted services for gasoline, for decent gasoline or bus transportation, things like that. So that would probably be one of the places that we would take a look first to make sure that we're getting that state contract rate, or at least that state contract rate or better on what we're paying for that.
Excellent.
Yes.
Just from a historical perspective, this is all very new to me, are there reasons why we haven't done this in the past, or we haven't done something like this in the past, as it might have been considered previously, or is it just a new opportunity that's come at this moment?
I am not aware that we have explored this in the past. Dan Cutzing, who is the Director of Facilities and Transportation, worked with U.S. Energy as part of this previous school district, and so this is one of the partners that he said, you know, we should take a look at this and see because I think we have some opportunity for savings. So as we look at turning over every stone here in the business office anyway, and the business operations of the organization, we're looking at best practices, we're looking at what other school districts doing, we're looking at what is the right decision for Richfield Schools, because like you said, there are some times when we explore things and I don't want to just jump on a bandwagon because everybody else is. When we get down to it, our risk is $675 a month, you know, and just the information processing and the ability to gather some information, do some long-term planning around that, I think is one of the things that Fiscal Plan Advisory Committee said is kind of a no-brainer, just that cost is pretty small for a large program that appears to at least pay for itself as part of the transport program. So it's...
Does Energy, or U.S. Energy, monitor this for us, or do we have to keep picking prices ourselves every month?
We pay $675 for them to monitor this. So they basically tell us, you know, we're going to switch over to transport right now, here's the rate that you're getting, that you'll have through U.S., through CenterPoint Energy, here's the rate we can get, so we're going to transport it for this coming month. We can turn that on and off on a monthly basis, as you saw. It's not like we have to have it on for the whole winter or have it on for the full year. We have that up to change on a monthly basis. They monitor it, that's what we're paying them for, is the tracking, the supervision, the budgeting, all of the analysis that really tells us when we should be making decisions. If we participate in the hedge program, the same thing, they're watching, there's conference calls with other school districts with kind of recommendations, and each school district can kind of say, yes, we're in, or no, we're not going back to do it. Or yes, we'll do it, but we're going to do it at this percentage instead of expert.
Well, do we have any further questions for Mr. Holgi on this topic? All right, I think we're good. Thank you very much for your thorough presentation. Christine, any comments on the consent board calendar? I think that's the board is pretty thorough. Yep, and so we also have a management team calendar internally that we've been utilizing, and what we're going to do over that next month is work to combine the things that we utilize to make sure that we're aligning management team presentations. We'll put things in like school hostings and such, so it becomes this pretty clean rotation of the business that we do with the goal of, obviously, prior to us being done for this school year, being launched, and have it active as we continue on in the future.
Thank you. I think it's also an opportunity to look at maybe bumping things up a little. Sometimes we come up against, wow, we need to decide this today or at this meeting when we sometimes feel like we might want a little more time. So it's also an opportunity to kind of look at that way a little bit.
Excellent. So we can move on to the conversations. All right, so we already talked about this being staff conditionally. Just a reminder that last week, when we commend our administrative professionals, and administrative professionals are those secretary, clerical, and support staff that do an incredible amount of work around our district. They were honored at the district office and then also within our schools throughout the week, words of gratitude and daily treats provided in our buildings and also by our community, basically just making sure that we honor our administrative professionals. So we commend them for their hard work. And then, secondly, Christina Gonzalez, Director of Student Support Services, and myself, Superintendent, received a community service award from Mark Nicollet for Richfield Public Schools' work on opening the Richfield Health Resource Center at the high school. It was a wonderful dinner and presentation. There was a set of school districts that were honored for their health centers and the work that they've done, and then also we were recognized as Richfield and actually featured in their promotional video, talking about the amazing things that we're doing at Richfield Public Schools. So all excellent news and good to hear that we're recognizing that outstanding work. We can move on to the consent agenda. There's a member who would like to move to consent agenda, we can entertain that.
Move to consent agenda.
All seven. So we have a motion by Paulus and a second by Ash. Need a consent agenda, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the consent agenda passes. So we have two policies to bring back. So we are bringing back Board Policy 101, which is the second read of Strategic Plan. It was the whole policy of Richfield Public Schools prior to the continuous improvement policy with the language aligned to current practice. One thing to note, at the third page is actually the strategic plan summary of all the questions the board members were, will people have easy access to our goals, to our strategy, to our beliefs? We're actually putting this within the overall policy. And so when we go through a new strategic planning process, it would actually require in 2020, 2010, or 2021, when we go to the next strategic plan, we'd actually have to update the policy with the new strategic plan work. So this would actually become part of our overall policy for the next five years. Any comments, questions on the strategic plan, policy as presented?
I have a question about something that's referenced in the policy, I don't think it needs to be changed, but I just realized, I was curious, how many of our sites or our programs do have more specific plans for their sites that are aligned with the strategic plan? Because in here it says that they may do that, I'm just curious how many of them actually have them.
So actually, every single one of our sites has a site-based strategic plan? And they... Is it here?
They have a school improvement plan.
Right, so it's a simple school improvement plan, they review them yearly, we analyze data based on each school and create action plans for each school to advance the students based on, based on these specific sites. So without any further questions, I think we've had a couple opportunities to take a look at this policy, we can certainly consider a motion to approve.
I'll move to the policy as presented.
Okay.
So a motion by Paulus and a second by Malick, that we approve the policy as presented, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Sure votes aye, the policy is approved. That might give us work. Absolutely. Moving on to 104, drug-free workplace and drug-free school. So this will be the second time or the third time reading through in regard to the additions to update things with regard to medical cannabis. We also analyzed and implemented the wording changes, which you'll see in red, based on recommendations of board members, and then also reviewing the MSBA policy guidelines. So any questions regarding the revisions to policy 104?
I have one comment and one question. The comment is section four, exceptions, and then section A under that. I had a hard time following the first sentence because of the commas, and it's kind of hard to tell sometimes what is the parenthetical in the sentence. So that particular sentence feels very important to the policy, and I think it's a little bit tricky to follow, so I just wanted to bring that up. My question is around section five, procedures D, around each employee shall be provided with written notice. And I think I brought this up when we talked about this the first time. It's not clear to me when that happens, and I just wonder if we should be clear in the policy, is that upon hiring, is that annually, and how are they required to acknowledge that they have received it? That just, it feels quite fuzzy to me, and again, for something of this level of importance, I wonder if we should be more specific.
So it's up to the board, it's one of those separations between policy and specific guidelines. What we do is in the hire paperwork, that's actually something in addition to contract that our staff fill out and complete. They read that policy, it's part of our new member orientation and packet. We can certainly add that in terms of guidelines, or we just know that that is the case. Yeah, it's an interesting, it is an interesting question, in the extent that there's revisions to the policy, I think you had brought this up previously, Crystal, as well, that there's revisions to the policy, but we be required to, again, disseminate that to every employee? So what we have begun doing is, Ms. Picard is beginning to send small board packs and summaries out to staff, and so with things that would be policy changes that would possibly impact employees, we would also make sure that they receive in our district-level email an attachment with that new policy and that policy change, to make sure that they did receive the information.
And then it's documented somewhere in HR that they've seen, that they've received this, right? It's part of your...
Yes, so within the personnel file, that's taken by HR in the new hire paperwork, and I believe that's maintained?
It is.
Yes, and then in terms of email, there's obviously electronic confirmation that the email has been sent, and then within our system, there would be confirmation that the email has been received.
But does that necessarily constitute, would that suffice as acknowledgement that an individual received it? I know you can put on an email something, some sort of button, I received this, you know.
Right, send an email to the receipt notice.
Right, you don't want someone collecting six hundred signatures, you know, signed papers. There usually are electronic means to have someone click, I, I wrote the attached policy and acknowledge it.
We currently are, in HR, exploring electronic means for documenting any type of policy or procedure that we want our staff to see, whether it be on a semi-annual basis, whether it be annually, or whether it be a one-and-done, to where we do get an electronic signature from them and maintain that electronically versus in paper or hard copy.
This one sounds like it's a serious part of employment.
Right.
It would be kind of a deal breaker if someone were outside of this policy, correct? Or it would be a significant event. Wouldn't necessarily be a deal breaker, but would...
Significant event.
It would be a significant event. So we probably should tighten up the language of how we... If the policy were to change and someone had only acknowledged something that was outdated, they were in compliance with the prior but not with the updated, and there was no acknowledgement, then where are we?
We can redo that piece, and that's a part of the policy, and update prior to our next meeting. So I'm very appreciative of the conversation, and what I'm wondering, and maybe, Steve, you're alluding to this already, that there's sort of these policy updates that you're emailing out, that would obviously not be limited to just this policy, but it sounds like you're kind of adopting a practice of, when there's any policy that is revised, or... So in our listening session with Education Richfield, one of the requests that they had had is a small email sort of linking to the board notes, but then also a smaller summary of what happened at the board meeting, so that we are supporting the communication outreach from a district perspective. And so Beth and I, Ms. Picard and I, have discussed a process to do that, so we're beginning that actually this month.
Is that going to kill our YouTube hits?
I'm glad you're tracking that.
Lost.
Nobody, nobody, nobody would want to miss the tip follow show. So I guess the main reason that I'm asking the question is, and this is a slight deviation from policy 104, and that may be something that we can, you know, think about for future agenda, but what it touches on is the whole notion of transparency and communication And I'm just wondering if that, that may even be a topic where the focus itself, you know, as an independent topic...
know, as an independent topic, that isn't just limited to this policy. So, yeah, well, I'll bring that up again, but as we get to our current agenda and conversation. Understanding, so, Crystal, what I'm hearing from you, and I think, Tim, you're sort of expressing a similar sentiment, that Item D, that to have, just to have some specificity around the timing of how and when, what that looks like, that that would be sort of reasonable to put in the policy. Having said that, I think we can, we can bring this, you know, we can, you know, let the administration take another crack at adding that language in and bring this back for our next meeting. I think that sounds like that's sort of the general feeling.
Is there a concern that this would be something the different employee groups might get issue with? Is it something that could be subject to bargaining or discussion?
I don't think so. These are board policies. I think we're just talking about a specific procedural guideline about how to implement the policy. So, we, probably what we will do is, we'll meet and discuss what the most effective way, be that at our yearly orientation or during workshop week, when we have all of our staff doing something along those lines, or some electronic communication for all of our staff to complete.
Because I don't want to overprescribe in the board policy, because I think, you know, that obviously is not the point, not what we should be doing in the board policies, but to provide a little bit more guidance in here, so somebody could look at this and say, "Oh, yes, the policy was followed because I remember, you know, that it happened at this point in time." So, finding the balance between the transparency and not microintentional.
All right. So, I'm going to, with your permission, Tim and Crystal, I'm going to consider this a motion and a second, that we carry this over to the next meeting. Fair enough?
Yeah.
I guess the motion, I guess it's accepted.
Well, okay, let's see. We're going to give it to Crystal, because she really brought it up.
That sounds reasonable.
Yeah. Is there any opposition to that, to that plan? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very well. If you're voting aye, as well, we will carry this policy over to our next meeting. That brings us to new business, item number one, which is termination and nonrenewal of probationary teaching contracts.
So, you see before you today, a list of probationary staff, who Mr. Miltier will share a little bit of information about for next steps.
Thank you. Tonight, we're bringing before you a resolution for proposing the nonrenewal of probationary teachers. Through our Contract for Education in Richfield, we're required to provide notice to any impacted teachers within or by June 1st of the school year that we're currently in. Therefore, we're recommending the nonrenewal of 25 full-time teachers, seven part-time teachers, as a result of, primarily as a result of an unanticipated reduction in enrollment for this school year that we're in and projected enrollments for the next school year.
Just background in regards to process, we worked really hard to be transparent in communications, so each of our administrators and leaders had personal conversations with each of these staff members late last week prior to the board packet being posted to make sure that they were really informed what was going to be with the board this evening. And obviously, those are some of the more difficult conversations that administrators have and never a fun part of our very difficult jobs.
So, are there further questions for Mr. Miltier or Mr. Nauske regarding this item? So, my understanding, Joel, is that, so, we take action on the resolution this evening that essentially puts the process into place for the district to sort of carry out the remainder of the process that is necessary?
Yes, that's correct. The faculty teacher will receive letters tomorrow.
Okay.
Is it possible that someone on this list could reapply or a position opened up? For example, if we had a surprise retirement or our position created at some point in the near term?
Absolutely. The teachers are welcome to reapply to any positions that are posted going forward, assuming correct license area and then the most qualified applying for the position, and they would be selected.
And would they resume the pathway in terms of probationary year one, two, or?
I believe they would rejoin, right? From that standpoint, as far as their probationary years, they would just continue on from where they were.
They would not, they would not reset everyone to one?
Correct.
Do we have a recall policy?
Not for non-provisionary teachers. We do have a recall policy for our unrequested leave of absence. So, if positions were posted in the licensed area matched to some of those teachers that were on an unrequested leave of absence, we would recall them first.
If not, we can look for a motion on this resolution?
I'll move the resolution.
Second?
So, we have a motion by Paulus and a second by Malik, and we move forward with the resolution relating to termination and renewal of probationary teachers. Is there any discussion? Are you in a, hold the board. Mr. Paulus?
Aye.
Ms. Brockney?
Aye.
Mr. Ashby?
Aye.
Ms. Malik?
Aye.
If you're voting aye, the resolution is adopted. Thank you. We will then move on to Item B, which is Disposition of Obsolete Equipment and Material Policy.
What you're going to see before you from Mr. Holgi, proposed policy 805 is in this section because it is a policy that would be brand-new to our district in regard to us transitioning out obsolete equipment and materials that are no longer used within Richfield Schools.
So, thank you. Today, we've talked about the acquisition of resources as one of the ways that we're looking to benefit the district. And we've also talked about the allocation of resources like natural gas. Now, we're talking about the disposition of resources that we acquire that are no longer being used for educational purposes or associated with the district. This is another one of those things that both Bernice Humnick, our Director of Finance, and Dan Kretzinger, our Director of Facilities and Transportation, have reviewed and have experience with as far as the disposition of items that are no longer being used. One of the things that we've discovered is we have a large number of items that have been in storage over a large number of years. And so, we're working to really clean out a lot of those areas that really are things that we thought, well, maybe we'll use. Well, three years down the road, five years down the road, we haven't been using them. So, we're looking at allocating those resources and making those available to the general public or others who have an interest in those items as part of a recycling program. We also have things that every year come up, where buildings are no longer using them as part of their programming. So, what we would look at and what we generally do is we look at, are there other buildings in the district that have a need for those items that we've acquired? And if there are no other buildings, then we'd either put them in storage, or in this situation, if we feel like long-term we're not going to have need for those resources, we would put those up and make them available to the public. There is quite a bit of statutory language as far as what we are required to do as a government entity to dispose of those resources. Those are the items that are really highlighted in the disposition of obsolete equipment and material policy that is before you this evening. This policy comes word for word from MSBA's model policy and really is a restatement of the statutory language that is in place as far as the amounts that are provided for, what the requirements are for each one of those areas, what the authorization of the district is to do, to dispose of those items. Specifically, one of the things that we want to highlight tonight is, if we are able to move forward with kind of the disposition of a number of these items and have approval from the board, we would be looking at using an organization called Public Surplus as that online website, having a link on our own website that hopefully the community members here in Richfield would have access to, certainly staff and obviously the community at large, the general public really would have access to that through the bidding process. Public Surplus really manages that whole acquisition process. They look at making sure that they have the financial resources for the individuals who are buying on that. They also, individuals would have to register on that program as well. So, two items really we have, one is kind of general information for you and for the general public, that we're looking at moving this way to dispose of items that really are not being used and have identified long-term as not having a long-term benefit to the district. And then, also, request an approval or feedback on the policy that is a restatement of the statute that really guides our work associated with this.
So, long story short, we're asking the board to have a first read of this policy in hopes of moving things forward at our next board meeting, so people can take some time in the next week or so to give feedback on the language, so that we can make changes. This comes from MSBA and basically, the goal is for us to sell and/or recycle things rather than stuff them in a basement or in an attic somewhere, which can significantly benefit the district in terms of storage space and also financially over the long term. And yes, this language comes pretty much straight out of MSBA-recommended model policy.
Are there any questions? We will carry this, we will carry this over for, I think this is our first, this is our first read, ask for our digital practice. I think we would be looking to carry it over to our next meeting if there are no specific Very well. We can move forward to the next item, which is the annual budget revision.
Thank you. And I have for your approval tonight of the 2015-16 revised budget. We're going to highlight a number of the changes that are part of that. Specifically with the revised budget, and we take a look at, what are the budget adjustments? How is our revenue changed in the organization? How are our expenditures changed in the organization? And then, tonight, we're also taking a look at budget alignment, making sure that, as we talked about earlier, the expenditures and budgets that we have in certain areas really line up with what is expected to be paid out over the course of that year as well. Before I begin, I can't, I can't really start and go any further without recognizing Bernice Humnick, our Director of Finance, who has done a tremendous amount of work. And when I say tremendous, I mean that as an understatement. What she has done to really kind of dig into our budget, dig into our finances, making sure that we realign and change our practices to align them up with best practices for school finance, to make sure that we are following recommendations that MMPR had for us as part of the audit, aligning around the UFRs or the Uniform Financial Accounting Reporting System. And really, having that work move forward and continue to move forward from work that's taken place over the last couple of years around transparency and information and being able to have information on a daily basis or a monthly basis to really help us track where we're at. And so, with that, I do want to highlight that work because, as I said, it is an understatement to say that she's engaged in this work at a very high level with very extensive in-depth analysis, really pulling that together. So, again, we're looking at budget adjustments and then budget alignment, looking at our funding and look at our fund adjustments, and then UFRs compliance changes, which, if you remember, was part of the audit process and audit recommendations from January. As we move forward in the high-level piece, this is kind of the overview of the adopted and revised budget revenue and the adopted and revised expenditure budgets. Bottom dollar, we are anticipating about $473,299 additional revenue for this coming year, and we have $19475 of additional expenditures that are built into this revised budget. One of the things also, as we talked about changes and things like that, I need to let you know that this next year or two will probably be a little bit messy. Those of you who have been on the board for a number of years are used to kind of seeing some things in certain buckets and know what to look for. Because we've done that realignment of our funds and the realignment of the UFRs, some of the numbers may not match up exactly as far as when we talk about a general subtotal, when we have transportation, operating capital, and technology levy, they are all really a part of the general fund. And so, how do we pool those monies together? And one of the things that you can see here when we look at revenue is our general grants and non-grants. The revenue is up just over a million dollars, but what we've done is we've taken a look at transportation, which had revenue that was projected higher than what we're anticipating built into that budget due to some program changes. And so, we have to see a $639,000 reduction in revenue projected for transportation for the current year. This has to do with things like transportation integration funding, like our Choices Years programming, that we've seen that transportation program decline, but we've continued to assume the same amount of income for the district to pay for that program and reimbursement. And so, it's been one of those things where in the past, we've kind of looked at, what are the pools of money and how do they bounce forward? And there haven't been concerns about that from the standpoint of, the dollars that match up, the work is taking place, but we're trying to put those things into the right buckets so that we really can look at transportation. And in this situation, you can see that our general transportation really is, the revenue is not following the expenditures, or the expenditures are not following the revenue. And so, we're subsidizing that program. And so, as we look at the money, this increase, much of that is ultimately going to have to go to pay for the, for the expenditures within transportation. So, we're digging in and looking at it in that way. So, where we traditionally have looked at, this top line is the general operations, this is offset by that. And so, don't get led by some of these big numbers. The big numbers really are $473,000 of additional revenue, $194,000 of additional expenditure. As we build that out and we look at where some of those changes, we see that $473,000 increase in revenue. $26,000 is in a reduction in our grants, the title programs, the federal programs associated with that, a general increase of that $1.1 million, but the transportation that offsets that, a reduction of $639,000, and then a small increase in our capital budget. One of the things that we look at with our audit and is required for us to be reporting from the state, and this is one of those new snapshots, what are the funding sources? It looks at the different categories of funding sources, federal revenue, federal revenue direct, and sorry, the first one's federal revenue from MD, federal revenue direct, income and transfer, loan and bond sale, local revenue, which is our local levies and other donations and grants coming directly into the district, local sales and insurance recovery. We saw an increase because we had a loss at Richfield Middle School in July of last year, so there was a recovery from our insurance program for that. And then, the state revenue, which increased by $897,000. Earlier tonight, you heard about access funding. That was not built into the budget because it wasn't established until we had gotten into the budget processing last year. So, a good portion of that increase has to do with that, as well as an increase in the state formula from what was predicted as part of the budget process because of where we're at in the legislative session last year. This local revenue is the reduction of some of the grants and aids associated locally, as well as changes within our levy authority based on our annual requirement. Switching gears to expenditures, our general fund expenditures are $159,503,000. This is an increase of $109,000. Our expenditures in our grants increased $81,839, which is about 6.2%. We had some additional carryover funds that were available to be used from last year, and so, that was a portion of that. The general fund decreased by $196,974 or 0.4%. We talked about an increase in transportation to really line up with what our projected expenditure costs are for that, so we increased that by about $118,000. And then, a capital increase by $106,644. And some of that really has to do with the changes in the funding and the allocations associated with the UFR system. Carrying forward, looking at it a little differently in some categories, our salary and benefits were reduced by $212,777. One of the biggest areas associated with this is, last year when we did our staffing, we based it on what our projected average cost per teacher or average cost per paraprofessional would be. Because we hired a large number of individuals into these different categories this year, especially in the teacher ranks, most of those were hired in with less than our average cost of salary and benefits. So, we saw our average cost of salary and benefits for our teachers specifically, as well as some of other categories, declined that helped identify those resources. Purchasing services increased by $330,000. A significant portion of that is transportation. So, one of the things that we've seen every year is our special education transportation and our homeless transportation increasing, which are really specialized services. Those are areas that are reimbursable in some areas or at some level, but we've seen that increase in transportation, part of that $330,000 is associated with that. The increase in supplies and materials for the current year has to do with the carryover for some curriculum and teaching and learning funds for purchases of supplies and materials that they had remaining last year that were allocated and directed to disability to carry forward for this year. And then, there were, if you look at the budget document that you got in the packet, you'll see there are a lot of line items that changed, either increasing or decreasing, that really is trying to look at where, how do we line things up best? And those really netted out to zero, where we took from our Fund Five and moved into a Fund One. Similar expenditures, more appropriate for coding, but a lot of those transition line item by line item would be associated with that. When you look at categories, and again, this is something that we report to the state and we report to, as part of the audit process, is reported in the audit, we see categories of expenditures, administration, district support services. So, administration really are principals, licensed administrators. District support services are the financial operations, the business, the HR functions of the organization. Elementary and secondary education. Elementary and secondary education is teachers, support staff specifically associated with the instruction. Instructional support, one of the things you'll see here is a $2.3 million increase in that instructional support. But if you look down here under sites and buildings, you see a $2.4 million reduction. There are certain areas that we had in what we called our Fund Five, which was our buildings and sites, that really are part of Fund One, our technology referential dollars, our operating capital dollars. So those adjustments were made out of sites and buildings and reidentified as part of instructional support, which is really the services that they're providing. So if you think about our technology or equipment, that is part of UFRS's instructional support category. It's realigned into that area, really showing what it is those dollars are being used for instead of just what looks like a building expenditure or a site expenditure. Other fixed costs is a smaller amount. Pupil support is our integration funding. It's our counselors, our services that are supporting students. Special services is special education. And vocational education is that kind of area. So again, biggest changes were in sites and buildings and the instructional support, and those are pretty much announced there. We see administration reduced from our budget by about $290,000. Elementary and secondary instruction, we see that reduction as well. We talked about funding the average cost for staffing associated with that, and then increases in some of our pupil support categories as well. Looking at it a little bit differently, with our revised budget, this is the proportion of each one of these areas, proportion of our total budget in each one of these areas funds. So what you'll see is still over 90% of our funds are going directly to instructional services, whether it's elementary, secondary education, special services, sites and buildings, pupil support, instructional support, the licensed administration and their support of their buildings, really is the largest chunk of our dollars with 2.5%, 3.5% really tied in with our business operations of the organization, the finance, the HR. Other fixed costs are things like property casualty liability insurance, specifically tied with that. And then vocational education is a smaller program here in the district as well. And then similarly, looking at another way that we look at this information in the audit and state recording is the categories. We all talked about that salaries and benefits are the largest portion of our program. And you can see that it's $40 million that are associated with our salary and benefits program. Those are the areas that we have about $212,000 reductions associated with that. The purchase services, we talked about transportation. Other areas where we are supporting and purchasing programs that way, we're the highest areas there. And supply and materials, we already talked about as well. And then finally, so that brings us to fund balance. And this is another area that we continue to dialogue about, how do we look at this? What are the numbers that we use? Everybody, and as FPAK reviewed it or Fiscal Planning Advisory Committee reviewed, we saw every district report something a little bit different in their fund balance and how they allocate what that amount is. Looking at how we have looked at it specifically in the past, this is the dollar amount that, this is the dollar amount that we've used for that projected unassigned fund balance. To use for other areas, it breaks out a little bit differently here because, as we talked about, that under budget or over expenditure associated with transportation has to be covered by that general fund expenditure, or by the general fund budget. So what that really brings down to those two areas is we end up projected for about a 4.4% fund balance at the end of this current year, which represents that $274,000 increase in the fund balance from our current 4.2%. With our general fund a total of $3.8 million, but some of these have specific purposes for which they can be used for general unassigned fund balance purposes. These other categories, we really focused on the general fund as part of this year. The food service, community education debt service, internal service, local debt service really tend to be more stable, and so those are being unchanged this year as far as changes associated with that. And then finally, so those are the revenue and expenditure analysis and the details breaking that down. This is a highlight of the work that Bernice has done kind of behind the scenes that you don't get to see on a PowerPoint video. And so when we look at our fund alignment, that is really lining up with the UFRS coding, looking at Fund One as the primary purposes for all of our instructional categories and all of our operations that are targeted into food service or community act. So moving our technology, our capital, our deferred maintenance into Fund One is a primary point to really kind of creating that transparency around that. And then we also talked about that adjusting the budget to align with historical and current year trend data. So Bernice and I spent a lot of time taking a look at, okay, where are we at this year? One of our challenges that we ran into is because a lot of things weren't charged from the very beginning off to different categories, it was hard to track and say, okay, here's exactly where this school's budget is running or this area is running. We're able to look pretty good at our staffing, but some of the other categories are things that we dug into. So we looked back to about, I think, 2012, 2013 and looked at what that trend data is and tried to make some assumptions, especially in those areas that we have routinely been over-expending. Knowing that there were other areas that we were under-expending, but focusing on the over-expending areas to make sure that we were mitigating that as much as possible. We also, Bernice also did a lot of work around the UFRS compliance, and the whole finance team worked on implementing and instituting new codes that really align with UFRS, training and educating our programs, our schools on what those new codes are, creating new reports to help them manage their budget, which is, continues to be a work in progress associated with that. And so her whole team has spent a lot of work and changing practices and updating processes to make sure that we are operating with best information. As we move forward, especially two years from now, three years from now, we'll be able to look at kind of monthly trends and see where we're at and better predict our end result. And then finally here is establishing a reserved and restricted fund balance closing account. There are certain categories of funding that are restricted and have to be reserved under state statute as far as what those purposes are. In the past, during the audit process, we've worked with the auditors to make sure that everything was linked up for those purposes. It was a little bit more challenging because our codes were different. We had rich field codes that then sectioned back to the UFRS codes, and so a lot of that was done behind the scenes. A lot of work has been to build those codes up at the beginning so that as we're building in staff, we know we're putting them into the right categories, as we're looking at expenditures, they're going into the right categories. And so restricted and reserved accounts, closing accounts have been built for health and safety, staff development, deferred maintenance, capital projects, operating capital, learning and development, area learning centers, state-approved alternative programs, gifted and talented, basic skills intensive for current technology, and the safe schools prime money. So if you think school finance is easy, it's not. I'll tell you, I've learned a lot about school finance, moving from HR into the finance side of things, and I've learned a lot from Bernice as far as her work. And together with the finance team have really started to implement some best practices. It continues to be a moving target, I shouldn't say moving target, it continues to be a process that we're going to continue to move on that journey together. But that is a highlight of the 15-16 revised budget, and I ask for your approval tonight of that revised budget. Next steps really will be coming to you in the future with a preliminary budget and then adopted budget for the 16-17 school year, that will be based on this information.
Questions for Craig regarding the budget?
Well, it's certainly positive to see the bottom, the bottom line is good news in terms of tracking favorably and, you know, with the fund balance that is tracking things within the targets that we've been aiming for, and so it's very positive. And I think this, you know, the overall, the overall flavor, I think, of the alignment work sounds like simplification, you know, that we're getting a less, even though it's still
Removing towards simplification.
Removing towards something that is, yes, that is working forward, which is, I think, fabulous because of course that promotes transparency and accountability. When, you know, when it's not so confusing, it means it's much easier, I think, to kind of know where you're staying. So I'm really pleased with that work.
Other comments from board members? Otherwise, we can certainly move to, to enter a motion on the revised budget.
I also real quick want to acknowledge the work of Craig, Bernice, and their team. Because it isn't just about that bottom line, where we have gone up an additional point two in our fund balance, something to be proud of. But what it really, what it really does for me, that the work that this team has been doing, is that we know that when we ask them, so what did we spend last year on gifted and talented education? Or what did we spend last year on health and safety? They can actually, as we move forward, they're going to be able to track from year to year the expenditures in each bucket. And very clearly, we're going to be able to share with each other and then also share with the public exactly what we're spending and exactly which areas. And that takes an incredible amount of work, and so I'm very proud and impressed with our finance team.
Outstanding. And any board member that would be willing to approve the revised budget?
I would approve the revised budget.
All second.
So we have most by Malick and a second by Brockie, that we approve the revised budget as presented? Is there any discussion? If not, all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair goes aye, budget is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item is donations, of which there are a few.
Donation, the beginning was some amazing community service and the kind of thing that as an adult in Richfield, that is a superintendent made to be proud, kindergarten students at RSTEM made and sold bracelets this year, donating $693. And they are donating that amount to RSTEM and the school to purchase a Funball outdoor game to be installed in the playgrounds. They are trying to make community service to their school better for themselves and also for other students, the best kind of community service from our kindergartners. A point for pride, Mr. Chavez, kids take it right after your own heart, sir.
That's important.
Yes, we thank our kindergartners. Then we move on for $7,840 from the Spartan Foundation, who donated that amount to the athletic department. And they are one of our ongoing amazing donors and amazing partners, and we are always honored by that partnership with the Spartan Foundation. $4,000 was donated to help purchase a new sound system for the main gym at Richfield High School. $2,000 for fencing and the middle school softball fields. $1,400 for softball catching gear. $200 for alpine ski hats, and $240 for hockey practice jerseys. Way to go, Spartan Foundation. Another $324.61 to RSTEM from Wells Fargo employees through their educational matching gifts program. Antonia Stroth, $70. Michelle Peterson, $70. Annika Sanders, $50. And Patrick Stone, $134.61. We thank those donors in Wells Fargo. And then finally, $63 from the League of Women Voters, who donated to the Richfield High School Random Act of Kindness Account, overseen by Assistant Principal Teresa Rosen. $23 from Anonymous. $20 from Maureen Skaglia, and $20 from Margaret Severs. We thank our League of Women Voters also.
So very generous list of donations for us to review this year. I would look for a motion if you would receive these donations with gratitude.
I saw a move there. To receive these donations.
Okay. Still, a motion by Ashmeet and a second by Malick, and we accept the donation with gratitude. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Say opposed. Chair goes aye in the motion carries. So thank you very much to all of these very generous donors. The next item is advanced planning, the legislative updates.
All right, so we do continue down the path and things, again, continue to bounce back and forth at the legislature. Talking about not significant money overall to schools, but there had been bouncing back and forth from the legislature and the governor for proposals that should really tighten up and shape over the next couple of weeks. Well, it's not specific to the legislature, I want to talk back about a conversation we had a little bit earlier about the lawsuit with the state of Minnesota in regard to integration. And I want us as a board to take specific note of this and pay special attention. There's a lot of conversation right now about a lawsuit that's been made about school integration with the state of Minnesota, basically naming the Department of Education and the state as defendant in the case, talking about policies that the state is allegedly implemented that have led to segregation in the schools. And present charter schools have stepped forward to help name themselves as part of that lawsuit. And the theory being that if you add yourself into a lawsuit, you can be part of the mitigation conversation. And so now there are conversations in regard to public schools and public school districts about whether or not they want to step in also to be part of that lawsuit. And the thinking behind it, as I understand it, is that if you add yourself in, if there is a resolution, you would be part of the conversation of what that looks like. Examples in the past, I think we talked a little bit about this, would be Leamet was a strategy to improve mitigation of allegedly racist-based practices. And then similarly, as you think about the Choices Yours, which was a transportation program to support integration from cities into, from the metro into suburbs, that was also mitigation of a previous lawsuit. So it is possible that this current lawsuit with the state of Minnesota over the next year plays out, and we will begin to educate ourselves as a board and as a school district about what our role is if we have a role in that lawsuit, but at the very least, we'll be paying specific close attention to that case as it moves forward.
Are there questions for board members regarding the suit? This is something to just sort of keep our eye on at this point in time and presumably would be acting in concert with neighbor districts if we choose to engage.
We're at the very least absolutely learning because, you know, each district might have different perspectives on what, what is the appropriate outcome. So we're just going to continue to educate ourselves and determine, you know, what the appropriate next steps are. Too early in the process, basically, to have.
All right, information and questions from the board? Members with items to share or questions to report?
I had to go visit the PLCs at Sheridan Hills. I did it a year ago when they were first starting up, and it was really fun to see how much they progressed and what kind of teamwork really is going on there and their enthusiasm and visibility to meet experience, to see the progression from last year.
So that goes out to you. We haven't had a chance to walk through participating in PLCs, and we're having a fair chat for board members. It's really great to have a chance to do.
Peter, I, through a liaison assignment, I was able to attend the most recent meeting of the Spartan Foundation, and we've mentioned that the donations faced, and everyone here went through there. They host an annual awards breakfast for a number of seniors at the high school. You know, more prominently, people are aware of the Sponer Award and the Ape and Hate Award, but they have others, you know, for students, you know, cat work, help against all odds. A number of kids who face diversity and have gone through high school and are looking at post-high school education, whether it's at a technical college, Armendale, four-year college. Anyway, they're up to 25 scholarships that they're giving out this year at their breakfast. So that's, that's an all-time high for them, so I just wanted to make note of that.
Yeah, thank you too.
I forget what the breakfast is, limited space.
There were two things that I wanted to share. First, I thought there was such a good story in the Sun Currents last week about the Richfield High School Future Problem Solving Team, who had their best performance ever at the state tournament, it said, where they placed fifth. And so I thought that was really special, and it was a good story about the work of the team and their coach, high school teacher, Mike Harris. And I thought that segued really nicely into our staff appreciation week and just wanted to thank our staff for all that they also do outside of their classrooms or outside of their day-to-day roles in the district. People who are coaching, advising, mentoring, sometimes just being a friendly face for our students. And it means a lot, and I know it takes a lot to do those things on top of your day-to-day work. So thank you so much for, for that. And again, congrats to the Future Problem Solving Team. And then the second thing, I saw a notice last week, the US Department of Education has this new initiative, and they're having summits in cities around the country that are called Teach to Lead. And it's opportunities for teams of teachers and staff to come together and think about, you know, challenges and how they can work together to address them. And they're, they just announced that they're having one in Minneapolis in July. And so I thought it could be a really neat opportunity for Richfield teachers who are passionate about issues and who want to work on some of these things together. And I think it would be great to have our district represented at that summit. So the deadline to apply is May 23rd, and I can get information to whomever on the district staff maybe wants to share that out, or if anybody is listening to this and wants information, you can get to me and I can send you the link.
Outstanding, Crystal. Thank you very much for that, for that information and those updates. Our future meeting dates, the second meeting in May will be here in the boardroom on the 16th. Our June meeting will be here in the boardroom on June 13th. Those are both Monday. Those are both Mondays. Are there suggested agenda items for us to entertain? One thing that I did want to bring forward was in reference to our earlier study session, we, you know, we concluded a study session this evening, talking about not only our, our participation or decisions regarding participation with LEAP, but we also learned from Dr. Clarkson regarding services that we, that we work with from ISD 287. At any rate, one of the things that I think is going to be important for the board to at least take some action on is to give final clarity on, you know, students regarding our withdrawal from LEAP that had been formalized earlier in this academic year. So I guess I would ask that we would put that item on our agenda for the May 16th meeting. Other items from board members that would like to bring forward?
Peter, I had something that, when we were talking about accommodations, you mentioned the Health Center. Could we get some information about utilization and visits? And if that's meeting expectations or if it's not as a schedule or behind what we expected?
Just in fact, during the first six months.
Yeah, we have about six months now. So right, the May 16th or the first meeting in June, we will have a presentation on the else side? I think the other, the other item that again will be touched briefly on, and this is more just sort of a general item, but we touched briefly on it when we were revised proofing policy 104. But that's the whole ocean of transparency and essentially being a user-friendly organization. You know, I think Super Danny Nowski has already indicated that the administration has taken some steps to, you know, collaboration with Ed Richfield, to really be proactive with communicating with Ed Richfield, with members of Education Richfield. I feel that, I guess I, I think this is a really important initiative, you know, for the, for the district as a whole to be building their transparency and basically becoming a more user-friendly organization. And I guess that would be something that I personally would be interested in seeing if the board take that up and has a priority and something that we might look at, maybe have some conversation through the summer regarding what that may look like and, you know, if we can, if we can forward that. So other items that anyone would like to bring forward? Hearing done, we can look for a motion on adjournment. Someone?
I'll second.
All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.